Thank you, partner. I'll stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we begin, I just want to mention, we had a special night last night for the Vietnam veterans, thanks to John Lazar and his committee Wayne Noonan. And Wayne Noonan and the committee. Not sure.
Well, it didn't come back to him.
It was, it was, um... Who was that? She lives in... In the road. What's the guy? The guy picking up the papers? Always around town picking up papers.
You're talking about? The, the... No.
No, 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 yeah, I was on the committee. It was Wayne.
Wayne Noonan, John Lazar. Who's the third guy? Oh, Luca Antonio.
Luca Antonio. It was a special night, especially for Vietnam veterans, which we honored. And John Lazar, Mrs. Luca Antonio, and...
Wayne.
Wayne Noonan.
Yeah.
Did a great job. It was a great event. I think it was fantastic. And a lot of people showed up, and it was quite an honor to be sitting in that audience. And to have the speakers come up, John, you know, the congressman and the senator, and they all came, and it was, it was, it was quite, quite the event. And I'd like to move, Tony, that we write a letter to John Lazar and his committee members for thanking him for an outstanding veterans event last night, for Vietnam veterans. It was well-attended, and, and he did a great job with the pens and everything. It was very good. Did you want to say?
Well, just especially nice for the Davis family, Michael and Peter and Gail, who are here, and were giving citations in honor of their brother Ricky, who they lost.
Yeah.
Their sisters Martha and Elaine live out of town, but thanking them as well.
Yeah, they were very nice, and he, he honored them too. It was the gold style, those sisters, brothers. Okay. Any other opening comments, Josh?
Yes, so there is a solarize program going on at the Coast Guard Station right now. I think that's going until nine. So, just a reminder to anybody out there in TV land, if you can tear yourself away from this meeting, that might be worth going to. I think it'll be, it is going until nine, so I think we'll probably wrap up well before then, so that's going on.
I hope so.
And also a reminder that we've had some concerns about cars and bushes blocking sidewalks, making them difficult to pass, so just a reminder to people to trim their hedges back and make sure you park on the street. I know some people are trying to balance the access to the road and the sidewalk, but especially close to the school, and now that it's dark, you know, if someone's out walking or running, if their car's parked on the sidewalk, they could step around, and so just a quick reminder on that.
Yeah, I, I, that's a great, great idea. We need to, Tony, tell the superintendent of Public Works and the police chief to get together and look at these corners, these overgrowth corners, because you come out, and by the time you get out there, half your car is in the, like, Nahat Road. There's a perfect area, you know? Your engine's in the, in the street, you know? So I just have them look at that.
Yeah, and if you guys have any, if you've heard directly about specific spots, we'll send them out there first.
I think Winter Street is a problem.
One concern was Castle Road, sort of at the top of the hill there.
Yeah.
That was mentioned.
Okay.
I did talk to the chief about it briefly a couple weeks ago, so he's aware. I think, you know, and sometimes the bushes are even worse, because it's a permanent...
Yeah, they're, and they force people, especially the women with the babies pushing the baby carriages, they gotta go on the street. Good. I want to remind everyone, the Town Hall will be closed Monday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day, which is this coming Monday. And I want to, all the Marines that were here last night, congratulations, and happy birthday to the Marine Corps, which is November 10th. Special Town Meeting is scheduled for November 23rd at the Town Hall at 12:30 PM. I've already talked about the closing of Veterans Day. The winter parking ban, the town of Nahat has a winter parking ban from policy, all vehicles must be off the road, off the street during the hours of 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM. And it starts on December 21st, 2019. I'll continue to mention that each meeting, so people, when they do get a ticket, you know, they can run into you.
And there's, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, there's also for folks who have, don't have a spot, right, off-street, there's the school, there's behind here at the Town Hall, along the spaces up against Pleasant Street, and for, for folks to park overnight, if, should we have a storm, they need to be out of the, those parking lots by 7:00 AM, but there is opportunity there as well.
Yeah, is there any other places they could park, maybe, like, I, I think of Little Nahat, number one, that's congested area, Bass Point is in the second, maybe the Knights and down that area, people could park and, you know, and Johnson School, some things like that.
Johnson School covers the Bass Point area.
Right.
And then we opened up, last year, we opened up this back parking lot as well for folks up in this, in this area. We can think about it, something for...
I was just thinking, over in Bass Point, especially the, you know, open up the park back there, you know, up by the, the pump station down there, some parking down there they could use, you know, with the parking van, you know? There's, and then just, as long as they get it out by Sunday, because they, they plow that.
Right, right, exactly. Same here.
Yeah.
Because, because we have Council on Aging.
Right.
We gotta get the parking lot fully cleared before the day starts, so. And those Knights, for, for folks who have winter street parking, we incorporated a new, a light on the Town Hall website. So when a storm is coming, if you go to the Town Hall website, and up in the top corner, there'll be an indication as to whether or not you have to pull your car off of the street. And those, that's just for people who have winter street parking. Everyone else, there is no parking on the streets during the wintertime.
Well, they have to get a sticker from the police department, yeah, they have to go get that, yeah.
Yep, yep.
I wonder if it's time to put a blue light in, you know how they do it.
That's what it looks like. It's a blue and red light on the, but we, it's on the website.
Yeah, well, a lot of people, you know, don't go on the website, you know?
Is it small, it's, it's not a large group of people who have that winter street parking?
Yeah.
So...
Crip Size Leaf Pickup has been extended for the month of November. Please have your biodegradable bags out at the curb at 7:00 AM the following days, Tuesday, November 12th, Monday, November 18th, and November 23rd. Property tax bills were mailed out the 1st of November, and the due date is December 2nd. Anyways, and, yeah, the approval of the executive session.
The next one is a motion, so I'll, I'll take that motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the executive session meeting minutes from July 31st, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You can't sit there. No, you're gonna sit down.
Do you, I thought this might be a good thing to read during your...
You have just one pen.
You got it? Okay.
We have the planning board with us.
Who is?
Mr. Canty.
Good to see you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Tony, you want to go through the, on the appointment of the, how we're gonna run the appointment of the candidate for Scoop, I mean, for Planning Board?
Yeah, so I move that we postpone the Board of Selectmen meeting and open a joint meeting with the Planning Board.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
And then the Planning Board, have you got a chrome everything, Rolson? You gotta open up, you've gotta open up your meeting, yes. All right, Planning Board, we're, we're convened with the Board of Selectmen, we're gonna open our meeting at 7:13. Yes. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Overruled. Tony, you want to go through how we're gonna do the procedure for this?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Planning Board members, Board of Selectmen, for opening the joint meeting. So what we have in front of us is to appoint two Planning Board members to fill two vacant seats. And what I'll do here is just kind of explain the procedure that we're about to go through. You have a packet in front of you. The top sheet there is a ballot, but you don't have to, you don't have to record anything. I'll be the official record keeper for this, and I'll explain that in a moment. Your second sheet in your packet is an article from the Town Charter, Section 3-13, which talks about vacancies and forfeiture of office. Subsection C, "Any vacancy of an elective office, with the exception of the Board of Selectmen, shall be filled by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the office, board, or committee. The appointment shall be effective only until the next election of the town, at which time the vacancy shall be filled by ballot for the unexpired term of the previously vacant office." So we have two vacant seats. One is Mr. Richard Snyder, and the other is Mrs. Allison Ackerman. Both of these appointments will serve in those vacant seats until the final Saturday in April, when the town annual election will occur, and those two seats will be up for election for the remaining term of each. I believe Mr. Snyder, his term is until 2023, and Mrs. Ackerman, 2022.
I think that's correct.
Next in your packet are four pieces of information that we, we received, we've received expression of interest to join the Planning Board from four different individuals, one of which actually is not a Nahat resident, so they're, they're ineligible. The three from Nahat are Daniel Berman, J. Shannon Bianchi, and Edward Goodrich. And their information is in the packet. And then lastly, in this packet are the two resignation notices from Mrs. Ackerman and Mr. Snyder. So what we're gonna do here is by alphabetical order, first, what, what you will do is, Chairman of the Planning Board, nominate candidates to fill Mrs. Allison Ackerman's seat. So you'll nominate the three candidates that I just mentioned. Then we'll go down the table in alphabetical order, which you'll see in your paper, will be Josh Antrim from the Board of Selectmen, then Gene Canty from Planning Board, then Sheila Hamilton from Planning Board, then Calvin Hastings from Planning Board, then Richard Lombard from Board of Selectmen, then Mirana Maximavich from Planning Board, and then, I don't see Steve here, so...
Steve, Steve is, is not here. I talked with him about an hour ago. He's working at the Revere Fire Department and trying to get someone to cover for him, and if he does, he'll be here. Otherwise, he's not here.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll mark him down as absent. So, so, Mr. Chairman, you'll nominate the three candidates, and then each of you will announce who you are voting for of those three candidates to fill that seat, and I'll keep record of it. And then, once a majority is, once, then the majority candidate there with the most votes will be the appointee. And then, we will open the second seat for voting, where you'll nominate the remaining two candidates, and the same thing, you guys, everybody here at the table will choose between those two. Okay?
Okay. I do have one other question. I know that we went over this, this afternoon. But what if the candidates have some concern as to which seat they want to run for? Because that changes when they have to, I guess it adds a year either to, if they get elected, to their, when they have to rerun again.
The appointees, the two, the two appointees here will serve in those two seats until April.
Yep.
Come April, and leading up to April, they will, if they so choose, can run for either seat. Both seats, Ackerman and Snyder would be deemed open.
Yep.
For different term lengths, so Ackerman's seat will be open until 2022, and Snyder will be open until 2023. So either appointee, doesn't matter which seat they get put on tonight, the reason we have this split this way is for the public record, so that we have record on town of how those seats were carried out and by who.
Okay, there are two of the candidates present that, that are on this list, not three. So, and all three of those candidates have been before the Planning Board. So it's your option as to whether you want to hear from them briefly, or whether you want to waive that.
I, I actually, I'll leave that up to you two chairmen to decide. I, if all three were here, I would say certainly open it up to all three. Where one candidate is not here, it may make sense not to open up the floor to those three.
I think that's it.
We're all set. I've heard...
All right, then, we will take this in the order that you have them in the back of the, and we're, we're voting first on the Snyder seat.
Ackerman seat.
Ackerman seat?
Yep, alphabetical, alphabetical order.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right. So the, the first candidate for that will be, I, I would make a motion to nominate Dan Berman to fill that position. I'll second the nomination. All right. Then, is there, are there any further questions or comments?
Hearing none, then I would ask the, you want the, you want the Planning Board to vote first?
I would nominate all three candidates first.
First?
And then we'll go...
Okay.
Down the list on the, on voting.
Then we want to, then we want to do Mr. Bianchi, and therefore I nominate Mr. Bianchi for that position. Mr. Snyder's seat?
Ackerman.
Pardon?
Ackerman seat.
Ackerman seat, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're right, we did the... I'll second the motion.
All right, is there any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now...
One more. You got a third candidate to nominate.
You have another one, don't you? This one. I have Mr. Goodrich. Goodrich, to my knowledge, in my memory, is not present. Is that correct?
Correct.
If so, please speak up, Mr. Goodrich. But in any event, he has been before the Board, and I would entertain a motion to nominate him for Mr. Snyder's seat.
I'll say in the motion.
Are there any questions or comments?
I think it's Ackerman's seat.
Ackerman's seat, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. I have Mr. Snyder on my head, my brain. No further questions or comments now? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, we, now, we could, now, tell us how to do the...
All right, so now you have three potential candidate, three candidates to choose from to fill, to be appointed, to fill the vacancy of Allison Ackerman. So what I'll do is I'll call, I have your names listed here in alphabetical order. I'll call your name and announce who you're, who you are voting for to fill that seat. So start with Josh Antrim.
Daniel Berman.
Gene Canty.
Which are we voting on now?
You are, you're choosing between three candidates, Daniel Berman, J. Shannon Bianchi, and Ed Goodrich, for Allison Ackerman's vacancy until April, this last Saturday in April.
Mr. Berman.
Sheila Hamilton.
Mr. Berman.
Calvin Hastings.
Uh, Mr. Bianchi.
Richard Lombard.
Mr. Berman.
Mirana Maximavich. Am I saying that right?
Yep, almost. Mr. Bianchi.
And Steve Viviano is absent.
He's absent.
So for Ms. Ackerman's seat, I count one, two, three, four votes for Daniel Berman, and two votes for J. Shannon Bianchi. Daniel Berman will be the appointee for Allison Ackerman's seat. Congratulations, Mr. Berman. So now, Chairman Hastings, if you would nominate Mr. Bianchi and Mr. Goodrich for, to be candidates for Mr. Snyder's seat.
All right, I, I nominate, uh... Are you hoping to do both of these or one at a time?
You can do both.
Okay. I nominate, um, Mr. Bianchi for Richard Snyder's seat.
Second.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Do you have a second? Are there any questions or further comments?
No. Nothing on me.
Or you have a comment?
You, you have another nominee.
I have another nominee. All right, for the same, for Mr. Snyder's seat, I nominate J., no, we'll just do Goodrich, whatever is. Edward A. Goodrich.
I'll say in the motion.
Any questions or any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, so you, so you have two candidates to choose from, Mr. J. Shannon Bianchi and Mr. Ed Goodrich, to fill Mr. Richard Snyder's vacancy until the last Saturday in April of 2020. So I'll go through the list again. Please announce who you vote for. Josh Antrim.
Edward Goodrich.
Mr. Bianchi.
Uh, Gene Canty voting for J. Shannon Bianchi. Sheila Hamilton.
Mr. Bianchi.
Calvin Hastings.
Mr. Bianchi.
Richard Lombard.
Mr. Goodrich.
And Mrs. Mirana, let's give it...
And Mr. Bianchi.
Okay, so I have four votes in favor of Mr. Shannon Bianchi, and two votes in favor of Mr. Goodrich. So, Mr. Shannon Bianchi, congratulations, you are the appointee for Mr. Snyder's vacancy. And to Goodrich. Cal, you could print and sign here, and then Richie, if you could print and sign there as well. Uh, Mr. Bianchi and, um, Mr. Berman, congratulations. If you would, please reach out to the town clerk tomorrow or on Monday to set up a time to be sworn in and take your oath of office. Congratulations. Tuesday, I'm sorry. Tuesday, of course, Tuesday, we're closed for observance of Veterans Day, Tuesday. Congratulations.
Thanks, Cal. Thanks, Cal.
So you can move to return the joint meeting.
I move to adjourn the Planning Board's meeting. Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. Gene, good to see you. Pardon me? Good to see you.
Yeah. I move to adjourn the joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board and return to the regular Board of Selectmen meeting. Richie, we got a motion to return to...
Yes, you want to make it?
Well, you can say seconded. And then you can say whatever you want. How about all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the next item is, um... You want to announce the next item?
Well, it's the, um... The next item is the swim, Josh.
Is this, is the special...
Polar plunge?
No, before that, we have the vote to set the special election date for the vacancy.
Okay, I didn't see that.
Yep, item 2B.
Oh, okay.
I can just read the motion if you'd like.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I move that the Board, that the Board vote in accordance with general law, C-41, paragraph 10, and C., section 53, paragraph 7 and 10, to call a special election to fill a vacancy in the Office of Selectmen. Such election shall be held January 29th, 2020 during the following hours, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. To direct the Town Administrative, provide a copy of this vote, signed by the Chair as a notice to the Town Clerk of such election, and further to direct the Town Clerk forthwith to make nomination papers available for the Office of Selectmen to fill a vacancy and develop an election schedule with pertinent state election deadlines set forth herein.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Okay, next is Josh.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the next, uh, excuse me, approve the event request for an Ellwood Chapel concert on December 7th at 7:30 p.m.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Next one is what? Yes, 3C. I don't seem to have a 3C. 2B, that's 2C, sorry. Oh, sorry, I missed it.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for a freezing-for-a-reason polar plunge at Short Beach on January 1st, 2020 at 11:00 a.m.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries?
I move that the Board of Selectmen, wait, we already did this one. I went out, did I go out of sequence? I guess I went out of sequence. Then there's the new rules for the cemetery.
There's no motion for new business, letter E, new rules proposed by Cemetery Committee. Cemetery Committee has been convening for quite some time now, taking a look at the rules of the cemetery. There's a lot of ambiguity in the rules, and so they spent a lot of time, put together some recommended changes, and it is in your book for you guys, for the Board to review. And at a later date,
All right.
consider amending or voting or whatever you...
We can take these copies then? All right. So it's ongoing business then?
We got our vote on the cemetery.
You don't have to vote on them, Mr. Chairman. Just, they're for you to
Review.
accept to review, and then we'll vote or amend at a later date. The committee got together and took a look at the old rules. There was some things that needed more clarity, and so they put an effort in to clear up some of the rules on that and presented to you tonight for your review. So no motion needed, just making sure, just putting it on record that there's proposed changes in front of you for your review. And we have no schedule right now for when to vote on it or amend it. We can work that out.
Tony, can you go through the cost structure from the new cost structure for the burial information? New and old, any changes, plus or minus?
Everything, everything in yellow in front of you, I believe, is a change.
I have, I have all white. I don't have any yellow.
It's one that's folded over.
Oh, here it is, yeah. Okay, so the changes are, okay. So we're not going to vote tonight, we're just going to review this tonight?
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And we'll put it back on the agenda when?
If we can, December? Whenever you feel comfortable with your review, and if you have any changes, or if you'd like to meet with the committee to talk about some of the things that they're proposing, we can work that out in the future.
Well, I wouldn't mind having a meeting with the Cemetery Committee. Maybe our next scheduled Selectmen's meeting, and then have the vote the following week or the next Selectmen to confirm everything.
I think the 21st is our next meeting?
So we'll have one then, that night?
Sure.
Review it with them, and then the following Selectmen's meeting gives us time to review everything, listen to them, and then, and vote on the changes, okay? Good. Tony, is that all of you?
Absolutely. I'll invite them to the next Board of Selectmen meeting to present some of the changes that they put in front of you tonight.
I think the regulations that is, they've been, um... A lot of people have not adhered to the current, current rules and regulations of the cemetery. I see things that shouldn't be there. It's once someone does it, they all think they can, you know, they could undo it and things like that, so... Yeah, I think, and then have it posted outside of the, or inside on the wall of the entrance, so the people know the rules and regulations.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Is that it?
Let's, uh... Have any business for ongoing business? You can go to the Town Administrator Report.
Go ahead.
We have paving occurring in town right now. We have a new five-year capital plan that was produced by Stan Tech last year. It's based on the quality of the roadways in town and prioritized that way. It's then later, what it doesn't account for, what we take, we take, we start there, and then we take a look at our budget and how much, how many roads we can accomplish in a given season, and then we also look at upcoming work, like water, or sewer, or gas, and try to schedule around that. So, the roads that are being, that have been ground down are according to that list. It can be found on the Nahat website. And next week, the crews aggregate will be back in town to adjust manholes and catch basins, to raise them for, and level them for the new paving, which will occur the week of the 18th.
On the paving? So they, Tuesday through Thursday, they're doing the leveling of the fixtures, right? And then paving the next week? Was it also Tuesday through Thursday, I think?
Um, I, I, I think, I don't remember if I announced at the last Board of Selectmen meeting or not, but the town received a $20,000 grant from Community Compact Program and Division of Local Services to be used towards financial policies, capital planning, or financial forecasting. So we are working with the Department of Local Services to sign contracts, and then Collins Center from UMass Boston would be who we would work with. They come out and take a look at our, our budget. This is something that we talked a lot about in the last budget cycle, about having firm financial policies on the books, and then also coming up with a capital plan that we could potentially fund going forward. So, it's really good news, happy to, happy to have that, and we'll be moving forward on that. We just, we also just opened the bids for the portable pumps. So we got some money from FEMA, and we have money from two fiscal, uh, two annual town meetings ago. There's money dedicated for flood remediation. And we put a bid out for two eight-inch portable pumps. And we just opened the bid on Friday. We had, it was pretty competitive, and I think we're going to be able to get two pumps on a truck heading to Nahat rather soon. So we hope to have that in town before winter season, and that's going to be a great, those are going to be great assets for the town if we ever encounter, you know, flooding like circumstances as we did in March 2018. And that's what we got.
And you already, just to clarify, you already have selected that supplier and...
Yep, so it was lowest bid, lowest, lowest bid, uh, one, and it's about $157,000 for two eight-inch pumps plus hose. And we have, some of that money is funded from FEMA, and some of that is from that earmark from two annual town meetings ago.
Can you give us an update on the sound system in here? Has that money been gone out to bid yet, or is that...
We actually don't have to bid that. We've had a couple different
Vendors come in?
vendors come in and take a look. It sounds like we're going to be able to get, get some quality equipment in for our budget. We're just waiting to receive those funds from the state. They tell us the latest we'll see is in January.
Okay.
Their policy is to hold on to those funds until January in case of Chapter 9(c) cuts to the state budget. However, it doesn't look like there are going to be any 9(c) cuts coming down the road, so...
I have a name for you that's an expert in that sound system and things. I'll give it to you.
Yes.
I can probably help you, and just make sure, you know, there's a sound, that would be huge if we get this thing, you know?
Yep, upgrade, upgrade the operating system, upgrade cameras to high definition, upgrade sound system.
Good.
Be very helpful.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Ladies, did you have something? Nothing? I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
Seconded?
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Selectmen, good night, thank you, thanks for watching.